Call the meeting order for the Wilmer City Council for Monday, January 8th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Mesky.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Thagerly. Eight present, one absent.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the good republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
We have a sign up sheet for people that want to speak during the public forum. If you have not had an opportunity to sign up, please raise your hand so we can get it to you.
I would ask you to remind them that they just have to say their name and if they're a resident of Wilmer. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'll cover that when we get to the open forum process.
Okay.
There's nobody that is here at the start of the meeting and nobody raised their hands, so there will be nobody else that will be able to sign up for public hearing, public comment period. So the public comment period sign up is closed. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? So we have one item that we moved from the work session, a violation of Wilmer City Ordinance 4-57, Potentially Dangerous Dog, that has been moved forward at the request of Chief Felton. Anything other? Sheen in hearing, none. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Those were made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is our consent items. These are items that the council acts on in one motion and our city clerk reads through those items so that we know what those are. City Clerk Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have the following items to approve. The city council minutes of January 4th, city council minutes of January 3rd, city council minutes of December 18th, 2017, Rice Memorial Hospital born minutes of December 20th, 2017, municipal utilities minutes of December 26th, 2017, an application for exempt permit from Minnesota Duxa Unlimited State Committee, application for exempt permit from Kanduay County Friends of the NRA, consideration of on sale intoxicating wine and 3-2 liquor license for Golden Palace Restaurant due to a change of ownership, consideration of state application and permit for a one day to four day temporary on sale liquor license for Minnesota Duxa Unlimited Incorporated, a resolution acknowledging donations from July 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, of which three donations were received. $5,374.57 was the value of a small building from St. Cloud Coalition for homeless men, $2,500 from Word of Faith Family Church toward the purchase of canine body armor, and $500 from Christopher and Stephanie Batt toward the purchase of Wilmer fire and ambulance equipment, a resolution accepting project number 1703B and authorizing final payment in the amount of $31,697.10, a resolution approving change order number one for project number 1703A in the amount of $9,898.71, a resolution accepting project 1703A and authorizing final payment in the amount of $60,552.39, resolution approving purchase of Public Works backhoe in the amount of $125,976, a resolution approving purchase of Public Works bat wing mower in the amount of $108,515, and to accept the Human Rights Commission minutes of November 21st, 2017, Wilmer Community Center Board minutes of December 14th, 2017, Wilmer Community Ad and Rec Board minutes of January 3rd, 2018, building inspection report for the month of December 2017, and the accounts payable report through December 29th of 2017.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Those were made and seconded to approve. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
I'd like to pull item B, the city council minutes from January 3rd.
Okay. Councilmember Alvarado.
I was, I had a questions about the municipal. Do I pull that?
Municipal Utilities?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you'd pull those there.
I want to pull that and ask the question.
The one for December 26th?
I believe so. Let's, I'll back it up here. Yes, sir. December 26th. Thank you.
Okay. With the exception of those two items, any other discussion? Oh, entertain, uh, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I just wanted to reference our minutes. We did not have a quorum for that meeting, but we did have a discussion that took place regarding the process that we were there for in that meeting, and it now has disappeared. It isn't in the councilman, it isn't in the meeting. We had to hold another meeting on January 4th. I'm just wondering if we can get some of the documentation on some of the thoughts that were shared with what needs to take place in the future for special event liquor licensing, and how we can retrieve those or make sure that it is documented.
Let me make sure I understand. So you want to add something to the minutes stating what you just told me, or you just want to make sure that we're working on making sure that those things that were discussed do happen in the future?
The minutes had to be changed because there wasn't a quorum for the meeting.
Yes.
The items that were discussed are not listed in the minutes.
Okay.
And so somehow I would like that discussion to be recorded and to make sure that it doesn't just disappear.
And when you say recorded, you mean written into the minutes?
I don't know what's appropriate.
And then resubmitted?
Because we didn't have a quorum. So I'm asking, I just don't want them to fall into the black hole and disappear. Because we did talk about a process, and I think we asked staff to look into some checks and balances and those types of things when we made the motion originally, and then we couldn't do that because we didn't have a quorum. But those things were not discussed at 7:00 AM the next morning, and so I just don't want them to disappear.
Again, I don't, I'm going to ask the third time. Do you want us to write those statements, put them in the minutes, and then resubmit them next week?
Yes, please do that.
If that's the appropriate thing to do for a meeting that doesn't have a quorum?
Yes, because you can still take minutes. It's not required that you have a quorum. You can still take minutes and document what took place, and I think that's what you're asking for.
Then I will ask for the minutes from that meeting to reflect what happened at that meeting.
Yes. No, no problem.
Okay. And then let's just pull that totally, and then let's bring it to the next meeting for approval.
Yes.
So we want to approve that for this meeting.
Yes.
Okay?
That's fine.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Regarding item number seven, under the miscellaneous, the municipal power plant minutes, I was just wondering what the recent boiler incident was. It looks like General Manager Herron had addressed it, but it didn't provide any detail, and I was just wondering what that was all about. And I couldn't get a, I didn't have his email address, and I tried to email him, and I guess they have their own IT department. We have our own IT department, and the hospital has their own IT department, so there's, it's not easy to reach out sometimes. That's all I was concerned.
Councilmember Mesky, do you have an update on what happened there at the boiler incident?
Well, it reflects back to the comments that were just made. That's the extent of what we were told at the meeting is my recollection, and no one asked what the specific issue with the boiler was, because it was corrected, but, so I think, I think what you're reading is a reflection of what was at the meeting. There wasn't any additional information regarding that that I heard.
Okay. Thank you.
And so on that particular, and I don't know, I think this might be the incident, but where they had the overpressurization, where they had to take the pressure off and it was making the loud hissing sound. We, the council was all sent an email about that from Mr. Herron.
Okay.
When was that? Probably a month, month and a half ago. I'm not sure that that's what it is, but I wonder if that might have been.
Okay.
Ike, can you follow up on that and find out what that was and get back with us?
I will follow up on that, and I'll send that, what I find out, to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to approve those?
I'll approve those minutes, or I made a motion.
Motion to approve.
To approve the Wilmer Municipal Power Minutes.
Second.
Those were made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, same sign. That motion does carry as well. Next, we have a presentation of new employees, Sarah Anderson and Chris Rosen. Mr. Holland.
Mayor and council, and our visitors tonight, if I could have Chris and Sarah stand up and maybe Jim and Bruce, if you'll stand up, so I won't ask you to come up to the podium. But I just wanted to take the opportunity tonight to introduce Chris Rosen, who works out at our wastewater treatment facility, he's coming over from the Wilmer's Utilities Department. We're very pleased to have him. I, I recognized him tonight, and I was like, I don't know, I've seen him somewhere before, but yeah, we talked for about 30 minutes in my office about a month ago, and had a very nice conversation, so we're very glad to have him on board here. And then also, standing back in the back by Bruce is Sarah Anderson. We're very pleased to have her with us. She just started last week, and so she's going to be really valuable in our planning department, and look excited to have, you know, some new point of views, and I've told her that, you know, anytime she has an opinion on something, that she needs to tell us old gray hairs, you know, about it. Don't be afraid to hold back her opinion on it, so we're very pleased to have both of them here, and maybe we could give them a round of applause and welcome them to the city.
So Chris is a wastewater treatment operator out at the plant, and Sarah is our new city planner, and so two great additions. You know, Jim, I want to just commend you and your staff as well for, I know that there was some resistance of doing some of that sharing, and Chris, from what I've heard, you're going to be a great addition, and Jim, thanks for the leadership that you provided to your department to make the hire of Chris. So thank you for that. And Bruce, you know, it's always exciting to have fresh people come, and you know, the exciting thing about Sarah is that she went through her, her learning very quickly. She's a quick study, a quick learn. I had an opportunity to visit with her last week, and you're going to love the city, Wilmer, both of you are, and we're glad you're on board, and we're glad you're working for us, so we hope you have a long career with us, so congratulations. Now, you can stick around for the whole meeting if you choose, or you can certainly be excused as well. We'll understand, so thank you very much. You bet. Next, we have a public hearing to consider an ordinance to rezone property from general business to R2. Mr. Peterson, our planning and development director.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, I will not attempt to fight my way to the podium. I'll deal with it from back here. The city received an application from All-Star Investments to rezone some property they own east of First Street on East Litchfield Avenue. It was a single-family residence that was converted to their offices, and now they want to convert it back to a single-family residence. Most of the surrounding neighborhood is single-family or low-density multifamily residential. It's a recommendation of staff that the council rezone the property from GB to R2, that they adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this issue? Sheen in hearing, none. I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council. Council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it.
Second.
Those were made and seconded to adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes. Next, we'll have an issue on a dangerous dog report that we received from our police chief. We had this issue at our work session. It was moved forward to our city council meeting. The items that moved from our work session to our city council are items of emergent or something where a decision has to be made quickly, and so the chief has asked to do this. It's a potentially dangerous dog. In conferring with the city attorney between the two meetings, I believe the state statute requires us to, if a dog potentially could be euthanized, it has to be made by the governing body, and so that's why it's coming in front of us and why it's not being taken care of administratively by the police department. So Chief Felton, with that introduction, you can go ahead and give us a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Item before you tonight is the violation of a Wilmer Ordinance 4-57 involving a potentially dangerous dog in the 1,100 block of Dana Drive Southeast. The dog was deemed potentially dangerous on August 26, 2016. It's involved, been involved in several complaints, including two human bites where those people had to receive medical attention, one dog-on-dog bite, aggressive dog complaint, numerous calls of neglect and barking dogs. The dog has not, or the dog's owner has not complied with the potentially dangerous dog requirements for keeping the dog currently vaccinated, under the control of an adult with a leash no longer than six feet, current city dog licensing, proper enclosure. The dog was impounded last when it was running loose on December 28th. That was the second time it was sighted within a month's time. The recommendation from the staff and in speaking with the animal shelter is the primary goal is to gain compliance from the animal owner, ensure the safety of the dog in public, and reclaiming the animal's priority versus the euthanization of the dog. But what we'd ask the council to, to, to rule on is that the dog owner, complete proof of completion of rabies vaccination series, obtain its current city Wilmer license, neuter the dog to decrease its aggressive tendencies and inhibit wandering, and complete the above recommendations within 30 days, or the dog will be considered to be surrendered to Hawk Creek Animal Shelter where they can make the determination if it can be readopted or if it needs to be euthanized.
Council.
A motion to approve the, the recommendation of both the police department and the Hawk Creek Animal Shelter. Yeah.
Second.
Those were made and seconded to approve the recommendations of the police department and Hawk Creek Animal Shelter. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Felton, in speaking with the Hawk Creek Animal Shelter, did you get a feel for, do they believe if they were, I don't want to be a pessimist, but because of this gigantic list of failures to comply, that if the owner does not comply here and Hawk Creek takes possession of the animal, do they feel as though they may be able to find an owner or a dog like this is able to be rehabilitated?
They have, we've been in contact with Hawk Creek. They feel unfortunately that it is unlikely. Right now, they have to feed the dog by throwing food over the fence because no staff can get near it, that type of thing. They're hoping that, you know, surgical procedures and that type of thing could greatly change the dog's behavior, but they, they are not overly optimistic of that.
Would, would Hawk Creek do those procedures, or would they wait for a new owner, prospective owner, to do those procedures?
The impression I got from them, it may be a new owner before they would do those procedures.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
This is a difficult situation, and we had a lengthy discussion in our work session regarding this, and I think it is difficult for communities to experience the list that went on for three years with this dog. And I also expressed my concern about the dog, and that the dog's been, that this behavior's been allowed with the dog for that length of time also. So I just feel it necessary that we take some additional steps in the future to make sure that we don't have additional situations that go on for three years in our community. It's not fair to our community, and it's not fair to the animals. And so it is necessary for us to do this in this situation, but I do think that we can take some steps, both with dog licenses and perhaps looking at our ordinance to see if there's some way to prevent these from happening again in the future.
I'd like to make a comment. Councilmember Nelson. You know, it's a very sad day when a dog owner doesn't take the responsibility that's needed to care for the animal that they've, that's been entrusted to them. And for the council to have to deal with this, these types of situations, is something that the council shouldn't have to do. Being a responsible dog owner is more than just plopping down $5 and buying a dog or whatever the dollar amount is. There's a responsibility to apply common sense to care for the dog and to follow the rules that our city has established. And when that doesn't happen, it comes to this, and no one wants to euthanize a dog. That includes staff at the police department, that includes myself as the mayor, includes the council members that are sitting up here having to make this tough decision. But at the end of the day, it's about public safety, and we have to keep our citizens safe. You know, we have two animal, people bites, human bites, that had to receive medical attention over this. So, you know, the police department has tried to be as understanding and educating as they can, but in this particular case, that wasn't, that wasn't possible. And so it puts us in a very difficult situation to have to make a decision, and the council, I know, does not take these decisions lightly. And as the mayor, from the mayor's office, these things shouldn't happen in our community. People should take care of the animals that they've been entrusted with. And so it's very disturbing, so with that. So, motion made and seconded, there's been discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, I'd like to introduce the troop from Calvary Church, Troop 224, and Joel Helbreitner. And I know I just killed your name, but you'll correct it. And so Joel, if you could just introduce your leaders and also introduce your troop members, that would be great, if they could just stand when their names were called.
I'll just ask scouts stand. We have with us tonight Ryan, Mateo, Wyatt, Hunter, Gavin, Tyler, Shane, Drew, Taden, Eli, Justin, and Mason. And we also have some adult leaders, Andy, Larry, Andrew, Lee, and Ryan, as well as myself. The scouts are working on their citizenship in the community merit badge, and they're here to witness some community government in action. So we thank you to allow us to see you do your duty as we learn to be good citizens of this community.
Thank you very much for being here, and troop, thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you for going through with the Boy Scouts, and it's a good program, and hopefully you all make Eagle Scout. And so to the leaders, also thank you for the time that you give to, to serve the troop. I really do appreciate it. So let's give them a round of applause. Next, we'll have the city council open forum, and on the open forum, what we're going to do is there's going to be a little bit of a change. All we're asking you to do is state your name, and then whether you live in the city of Wilmer or not. At the last meeting, I had asked for your name, address, and phone number, and people graciously gave that. It was brought to my attention that we should just ask for people's name, and so we have, we've made that change. I checked with the city attorney. The city attorney said that's within the parameters of the mayor's office to do, but that I should advise the council that that's going to be my practice from this point on. If there's a future mayor that wishes to do something different, they certainly can do that. But so I'm asking you just your name and whether or not you live in the city of Wilmer or not. With that, we've got five people who have signed up. The first is Hamdi Khosar. If you could come to the podium, state your name, and then if you live in the city of Wilmer or not. And then you're limited to three minutes. There's a timer off to the side, and it'll buzz, so yeah, we'll let you know, so.
My name is Hamdi, and I live in Wilmer. So Mr. Christians seems to think that he can like a post without liking or supporting the planet rights that's in the post. I would like to read the bulk of one of these posts, and maybe Mr. Christians can point out which part he supports. I'm so angry after reading the Wilmer paper on October 14, 2017, written by a subscriber on the opinion page, that I wish I could tell this two face to face, face to face of how dangerously misinformed they are. My writing will be all about Muslims because they are dangerous threat. The other, later time, I certainly understand that the fellow placing the big food on the Muslim table. Their culture is disgusting and not acceptable in this or any civilized country. One comment was about how much Muslims given, have given to our community, has been living in a cave shop in Himalayas. Good grave. When have you have a culture with an average IQ of 68? What do they have to contribute to anyone? I was just reading an article about, by Ann Karakran, telling about how St. Cloud and Muslims have destroyed that city. People are having to sell their homes and are lost, their schools are the worst in the state, and this is, in our Minnesota, that has always been a leader in education. But these people have caused a great dumping down of America. Thank you for Catholic charity and Lutheran service. Your group has done a great job in aiding the destruction of our country. There are many more vlogs than these two, but they're the main destroyers of this area. This was the comment that was made, and for any of you who doesn't remember or know that this was a comment, I want to ask Mr. Christians, what part did you support it? And lastly, Mr. Rush, shall resign.
Thank you. Next is Dulce Alvarez. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not very good at my pronunciation. I know you'll do it right, so I apologize.
No worries.
Just for, just for the public's information, council members will not respond to your questions, and I will not respond to your questions. We just take this for information, so thank you.
My name is Dulce Alvarez, and I reside here in Wilmer. I will follow to what Hamdi said. We need to get these people out of our country and back to our Muslims hellholes. They will fit in because they don't fit here and never will. America was one country of two races with whites and blacks. In a little over 200, 200 years, together we outproduced and excelled in ever compared to the old, old cultures of Europe. Now we're flooded with illiterate Mexicans and Muslims. These people have exceedingly low IQs and bring crime and filth into this country that our forefathers sacrificed so much for. It is that our fate to end up with no longer a culture worth a damn, just a bunch of mongrels gnawing on the bone. If our government had followed our immigration laws, none of this would have happened, and that's why we must back Trump and drain the swamp that is Washington. I want my American back again, and that includes getting rid of the darn dreamers. We're not the ones to blame. If it's their illegal parents thinking they could pull a fast one. If you believe in Sahara Allah, abuse of women, children, marriages, sex with animals, pedophilia, lying, stealing, public pooping and peeing, then you will fit right in with our Muslim friends. Mr. Christiansen, would you like us to believe that he can support some part of this post, but not all of it? The problem is that every single line in that post is that of racism, Islamophobia, lie. Supporting this post makes you a racist. This is not some liberal conspiracy against you. You choose to support racism and now show no remorse, calling it BS. You need to resign, please.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Abdulahi Yusuf. Your name, and if you reside in the city or out?
I live, my name's Abdul Ali Yusuf, and I live by Wilmer.
Thank you.
A decade, graduate of Wilmer High School, live in Wilmer. I live especially in Ward 2, by responding with my Ron Christiansen, who supported hateful, racist lies, and returns by my family and my community. Mr. Christiansen's responsibility by Ward 2, it's unacceptable and embarrassing for the city of Wilmer. I own a small business, and I live in Wilmer for a decade, and I work hard to own a small business, and I actually have a lot of friends in this city, and this church that you all here, with all city councilors. And this community owns better than this, what Ron Christiansen said. And we're all brothers and sisters, and we all need to hand, to hold our hands together. This issue that holds a... This issue that holds a possible power and is supported to responding to all the people of Wilmer, and Ward 2, on the city council, he fell as a council person and most resigned it. I have three kids. Was born in Wilmer, raised in Wilmer, working hard, that, like, supposed to be working. If you have a kid, you should be knowing that your kids can be friends with some people that you're saying that, their names and their reasons that you're saying. All my kids have friends, and they all have family. So please, if you've been knowing this, you now be responsible for the city of Wilmer, and please, if you can, resign from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Assad Omar. Omar. Assad Omar?
Yes, sir. I'm all right. That's him.
Okay. You don't want to talk?
No, I'm all right.
Okay, thank you. Next is Christina Nelson. Your name, and if you reside within the city or not?
My name is Christina Nelson, and I am a resident of Wilmer. And I speak tonight on behalf of Isaiah Minnesota, particularly the leaders in Candy Ojai County. Isaiah is an organization for people of faith and good conscience to come together to work on behalf of justice. We have come tonight to express deep concern and regret over the recent statements that disparage and malign our neighbors, particularly our immigrant neighbors and those who practice the Islamic faith. Isaiah is not an acronym. Isaiah is a prophet in all three religions of the book, including Islam, Christianity, and Judaism. As a country that values life, freedom, liberty, and justice for all, it is our obligation to create a humane immigration system and a welcoming community. It is unarguable that immigrants contribute to our culture and our city. We are neighbors, coworkers, fellow shoppers in the store, and pedestrians on an afternoon walk. Our children learn side by side with each other in the schools. Our economic fates are intertwined as rural Americans. Since the biblical era, people have moved to different nations to survive and do more for their families. Immigrants and refugees moved to America for the promise of freedom and opportunity that this nation promotes. In an area that values faith and family among our highest priorities, how can we not see that our newest neighbors share these same values? In the Book of Isaiah, we are called as people of faith to be repairers of the breach. The untruths and generalities made about our neighbors have created a breach. Words of hurt, division, and fear have been spoken. We must respectfully ask that the leaders of this community, specifically the members of the Wilmer City Council, now speak words of reconciliation and repair. We would respectfully submit the following resolution for consideration and vote at the next city council meeting. Whereas the city of Wilmer and the surrounding area is stronger when all community residents are united, engaged, and valued as both neighbors and contributors to the public good, whereas in further recognition of the great ideal of equality and freedom as outlined in the U.S. Constitution and amendments, whereas in pursuit of a community in which all residents, without regard to age, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, race, ethnicity, religion, or country of origin, should be free to pursue life, liberty, and happiness, now therefore be it resolved that the Wilmer City Council, as representatives of the city of Wilmer, hereby declare and resolve the city of Wilmer to be a welcoming city to all who wish to come and contribute to the public good and future success of the community. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have a consideration of Armory and Gorton Avenue lift stations. Mr. Christensen, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. If you'll turn with me to the car form, the action report. The Armory and Gorton lift stations have been on the, as you recall, been on the capital planning documents for a number of years now. We've recently consolidated those into one design project and one construction project so that we can use, use services for both of those into one, into one project. That being said, the, this document tonight is for consideration and approval of the design phase of these, of this project, and the award, the recommendation be to award the agreement to Bolton Mink for both of these lift station projects in the amount of $211,855, as well as adopt a resolution, establish procedures related to compliance with reimbursement regulations under the Internal Revenue Code, which is intent to reimburse, and then also to the, adopt the preliminary budget for this project. And I say this project, meaning that I'm going to combine it into one, and this project, preliminary construction project or budget is estimated at just over 1.2 million, and that includes the engineering and design fees.
I'll move staff's recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
So the first resolution would be awarding the contract for Armory, Gorton Avenue lift stations, engineering, construction-related services to Bolton Mink. Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Christensen, is there monetary, have you done a monetary evaluation, just approximately what's saved in engineering services by engineering both projects at the same time versus separately, individually?
You know, I haven't done, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Plowman, I haven't done an exact accounting of that, but I would say that it's in the order of probably 10 to 20 percent of that engineering fees, and that's, like I say, that's a, probably a guess, an estimated guess, if you were to do these projects separately. Most of the savings you're going to find are not in design, but are in the construction itself, because you'd have to mobilize two different contractors on two different projects.
Okay, but it is a safe assumption that consolidation of both engineering and construction services saves the city money?
Absolutely. Thank you.
So the resolution is to award the contract for the Armory and Gorton Avenue lift stations, engineering, construction-related services to Bolton Mink. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmiss?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. The next resolution is a resolution establishing reimbursement for bond regulations.
I'll enter that resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to establish a reimbursement for bond regulations according to Internal Revenue Services Code. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmiss?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is a resolution adopting the preliminary project budget at $1,240,355.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmiss?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is consideration of Wilmer Area Community Foundation grant request for the community center. Mr. Brizendine, our community ed and rec director.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, before you is a request from community ed and rec staff, along with the Wilmer Community Center Advisory Committee, to write a $15,000 grant to the Wilmer Area Community Foundation. Funds, if provided, would support cultural activities, musical programs, and the completion of a mural being constructed by Ron Adams. It's staff's recommendation to approve submission of this grant to the Wilmer Area Community Foundation in the amount of $15,000 on behalf of the Wilmer Community Center Advisory Committee.
I'll move staff's recommendation, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve grant application submitted for the Wilmer Community Ed and Rec Foundation on behalf of the Wilmer Community Center. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification, I know Darlene Schroder is listed on this, on our information. She is still functioning as a volunteer there?
That is correct, and she's the chair of the community centers committee.
Okay. So the, the grant itself is to the city of Wilmer?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Thank you. I'm just wondering what, what dollar amount would be for entertainment versus the artwork that will be done? Do you know what the breakout is of that, or rough estimate?
I want to say there was about a $2,000 to $2,500 amount that would go towards the completion of the mural, if I remember right. I can get that amount to you through the city administrator.
Additional questions? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, that motion does carry. Next, we'll have the comments by the city administrator.
Mayor and council, I just want to mention tonight, over the holidays, we had our HR director leave, basically, the city. And so there's several things that are going on in the HR department. Compensation study, union negotiations that I was in the middle of with that department head, personnel policy book. We're finishing up all the evaluations. I'm pleased to announce that, I believe, 99 percent of all evaluations have been completed during the month of December, so I congratulate and thank all the departments for that. I will also point out that this week is my goal to have the HR director position posted in advertisement, also an airport manager, engineer one position, in the very near future, a building official, and then as of today, we had an IT tech person resign from the city. Now, all those duties fall to one individual, a very capable, a very smart individual, and he will not be named at this time.
Is he good-looking?
Very good-looking. Only his mother would say that. But anyway, we're going to put together a committee of myself and one council person and one staff person, and we're going to look for a new HR director. And so I talked with the mayor about this, and so tonight I put it out to the council. If you'd like to be that person that represents the council and be part of the selection of our new HR director, would you please send me an email or give me a call this week? And I will let you know the details. It will be several weeks, but essentially it would be part of the interview process and screening of the applicants. And I've already had a couple people contact me in front of, in fact, one of the council people, that there are some interest in that position, so I'm very pleased to hear that. So with that, Mayor, I just wanted to point out that we're going to be very busy in HR this month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then the mayor's comments. I just want to say that when the city administrator brought this up, for my consideration of how we wanted to handle filling these spots, I had stated that if none of the council wished to serve in that function, that I would, but I really feel that the council needs to be involved in that hiring process, that's how we've done it in the past, and so having a council member do that is, and Mr. Holland agreed with that wholeheartedly, so we've got a lot of work to do, there's a lot of things to get done, and the HR function is something that we need, it's a very critical need within our organization. You know, Bridgette was only with us just a little over a year, and, you know, she uncovered a lot of things that, that we should have been doing differently, and she was working on correcting those, so we need to keep those processes moving forward. And so the sooner we can get that position filled, the better. And then on the building inspector position, it's imperative that we get that out, get that advertised, so that we can get someone in and work side by side with our building official to, to have those duties transfer over as seamlessly as possible, and so the administrator will be working on that. This morning, Councilmember Schwantes and I attended a bonding hearing that was held out at Ridgewater College, talking about projects that are happening within our region. And we talked about the Highway 23 piece, and we also talked about the bridge that will go over the hi, the tracks down on the south side of Car Road 55. And so those are two meetings that I attended this, this morning. There were, actually, today I had a full day of meetings, I actually started meetings at 6:30 this morning, and I've been going nonstop all day, so. But there's a lot of exciting things happening in the community. And the other really exciting thing that happened last week is that Wilmer Fest announced that they'll be taking over the Celebrate the Light of the World celebration here in Wilmer. And so Councilmember Nelson and I attended an event last evening to congratulate and thank both Chad and Angie Kuzman for the 10 years of service that they gave to our community, having that light display at their home. It was interesting to hear kind of how the story started, and, and a lot of us were kind of jovial at times, laughing about some of the stories, and one in particular was shortly after Chad and Angie were married, is that he had presented a written proposal to her on what he wanted to purchase for lights for that particular year for his light display. And the budget was $250. And so he listed off these items that he had wanted to purchase, and it was going to be in the tune of $250, and he said, "I just need to report that at the end of the year, I spent just a bit over $15,000 on the lights." And so he didn't really meet his budgeting forecast too well. The other thing that Wilmer as a community needs to know, and Chad and Angie are very sincere and really want this to continue here in Wilmer, they had offers from four other cities to purchase the light display from them. I believe the first city that contacted them was Marshall, second was St. Cloud, and then there was two other cities that contacted them wanting to purchase. Mankato being one, and then I, I think it's Newall maybe was the other, I'm not sure on that fourth one, but the three are correct. So they wanted to come in and actually purchase this from him, and, and being a businessman like he is, he runs a business, but he wanted to give back to the community. He wanted the community to be blessed with what he's been able to give. The other thing that was encouraging, and I think probably Councilmember Nelson knew this before I did, probably, but, oh, he gave over $808,000 to the Salvation Army through that 10-year period of time. Let that sink in. $808,000, that's over $80,000 a year that he donated to the Salvation Army through the Red Kettle collection that he had out there. And so the Wilmer Fest has a big task on their hands, and speaking with James Miller, I actually met with him twice last week, I talked to him again this morning, they will be putting a committee together to look at where does this go within the community, how do we continue to celebrate the light of the world, and where does it happen here in Wilmer? So, you know, we have a very giving community, and I don't mean to point out one individual person over anybody else, but the contribution that the Kuzmans have given to our community has been just phenomenal. And if you also take a look at that, and I've said all along that what's good for Wilmer is good for Candy Ojai County, what's good for Candy Ojai County is good for Wilmer. And this is an example where Wilmer was really placed on the map around the Christmas light display, national news coverage, international news coverage. He was talking about, I believe it was in Great Britain, they're actually doing a story about his light display this year in Great Britain, and he talked about all of the different countries that have contacted him to do stories. Put us on the, on the map, because he listed us, his display as being in Wilmer, Minnesota. And so to Chad and Angie, thank you very much for the service you gave to our community. Wilmer Fest, you've got a big job, but I know you're up to it, and as a community, we need to step up and support that, and as a council, we also need to step up and support what needs to happen to make that happen. There's three locations that are currently on the table that they're looking at, one location is Robins Island, which of course everybody knows, another is Swanson Field, and another is Midwest Technology Campus. And those are the three that are on the table as of this morning, and I'm sure other locations will probably be identified as well. When the original conversations were happening with the Kuzmans, the Kuzmans did not have a desire to have it necessarily out at, out at Midwest Technology Campus, but when that moved to, Wilmer Fest, Wilmer Fest is more open to different locations. So we'll be getting a lot more details on that in the upcoming months, but that's great news for our community. We live in a great community, we have a lot of great things happening, and I just want us to, as we said at the end of the last council meeting, let's focus on the positive for 2018. We've got a great year ahead of us, we've got a lot of exciting things. Staff, I met with staff this afternoon in regards to a couple projects that they'll be bringing to us within the next month, a month and a half. be bringing to us within the next month, a month and a half. And it's an exciting time to live in Wilmer. And as we've said, we need to roll up our sleeves, we need to get some work done. And as we said earlier, when we're talking in the work session, we're talking about rainy day funds, folks, it's raining in Wilmer. We need to make some corrections. We need to get some things done. And so this will be a year of activity. This will be a year of getting projects done, and we're going to make it happen. And next year, when we talk to you, you are going to be so excited to look back at what we accomplished right here in Wilmer, Minnesota. And it's thanks to our citizens, it's thanks to our council, and it's thanks to our staff for a job well done. So with that, I'll stop talking because I told the scout people we'd be out of here by eight. I could talk till eight, but I'll stop. So anyways, thank you so much. Councilmember Mesky.
I'm first, all right. This evening, I'm thinking of a quote I use often in classes I teach is, "If there is no struggle, there is no progress," a Frederick Douglass quote. And it's obvious that there is a struggle, and I think I heard something that could be progress. And so I guess my comments tonight would be very simple, is I think we should probably consider this welcoming city resolution that was presented at our next working session. And if I need to make that a motion, I will, but I think we need to just consider it at our working session.
I think you could bring that to our administrator, and he'll handle that. I don't think there needs to be a motion unless you'd like to make one.
No, that's fine. If it's...
Yeah, you've got it. Yep.
You're done?
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Plowman?
Nothing official, just excited to be starting off the new year, especially with a packed house. I love the political process, and I appreciate each and every individual that shows up. I think it's really important for our community to show up and represent. Excited for the city of Wilmer. We have some challenges, as the mayor attested to, that we have, you know, both going back years, but then looking at our new budget, there's a lot of projects and there's a lot of really aggressive directions that we want to go. But we've proven that we have the ability and the fortitude to get that done and to band together and work as a council. I believe that we're meshing really good. It's an election year, so it's going to be exciting, but I'm up for the task, and I hope that can be said the same for my peers. And I appreciate working with everybody at the table, and I wish everybody in Wilmer a happy, safe, and successful New Year 2018.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I'll just comment. I took the opportunity on Saturday to attend a Vision 2040 event that they had at the mosque when it was another showing of the documentary, The Warehouse, Warehoused, I think is the correct title for that. I had attended that at WAC the first time that that was presented, and so I snuck in late to just enjoy the hospitality, conversation, and the good food. I know that they talked about doing that again at the mosque. It was incredible to experience the interest and the spirit there on Saturday. And so I would encourage you to watch the calendar to see if that event is being presented again. I think, having attended the Community Integration Center, thank you, get the right title, a couple weeks before that, I do think that it is an opportunity for each of us to learn about each other. And so I really did appreciate experiencing that. And thank you to all.
Councilmember Christensen?
I'll pass.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone who attended tonight's meeting. I think this is a great example for our Boy Scouts to see the public process happening and also to see that our citizens do have a voice.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we have a lot of great things coming forward, like the mayor mentioned. I'm very excited about it. I'm very excited about the energy in this room. I want to see that happen. I'm also excited about the small things, the community table at the Goodness and different things like that, where we can sit down together and visit and share. And we're not always right, we're not always wrong, but we're listening to each other, and that's exciting, and that's what it's all about. That's how we grow. I'm also excited about Minnesota and the upcoming football season, American football, and what's going on there, and see what that's all about. I would encourage the young scouts to appreciate their parents and their energy that they're putting out to help you guys achieve your goals of maybe becoming an Eagle Scout. It's a tough row. My brother and I didn't become Eagle Scouts. There are a lot of factors to that, and we're deeply hurt by that, but we think we had what it took, but we didn't have the opportunity. So gentlemen, young gentlemen, take advantage of the fact that your parents are putting their necks out there to help you succeed, okay? And let's see, Boy Scouts, Minnesota in general. And let's not forget about supporting our community, Spicer and their activities. It's, don't ever say there's nothing to do in this area. There are things to do. Just look around, open your eyes, volunteer, get out there. It's out there. There's a lot to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Osmus?
I think I'm good. I'll pass. I love listening to what you guys have to say.
You know, it's a pleasure to have you with us tonight. I didn't think we would have you with us, so we hope you mend, and our prayers have been with you as you recuperate, and it's good to see your smiling face here, sitting at the council chamber. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
We are adjourned.